Good evening to you all and welcome to, welcome to the first day of August and the first meeting of the Garner Town Council in the month of August. We appreciate your attendance here tonight. We have a lot of business to take care of this evening, so we'll, we'll proceed right along. For those of you who may have a question, our mask policies, all staff and visitors, including people who are fully vaccinated, have the option to wear face coverings while inside town facilities and during town council meetings. All persons should practice social distancing when possible in council chambers. And with that, Adam Clerk, I will ask if you will to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much. And it's obvious that all of our council is present this evening. As we do with all of our meetings, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation. I'll recognize Councilmember Kathy Behringer to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have invited Jared Wyckoff from Hayes Chapel Christian Church to give the invocation. He is the youth pastor there.
Okay, very good. Welcome, sir. We're glad to have you.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Lord, I thank you for this day. And thank you for allowing us to be a, be a town here and allowing us to be able to join here together and discuss these issues. During this time, I help us, I hope you help us to lead paths of righteousness, but also, Lord, help us as, as townspeople to, to lead lives of righteousness and be just in your eyes. Lord, help us as well to truly honor you in the way that we work about our lives and during this meeting, Lord, help us to see you truly during this time. And Lord, I also pray that we as a nation would turn our face to you and honor you, but also, Lord, that if anyone does not know you here as Lord and Savior today, Lord, I pray that you would press it upon their hearts and help them see the conviction to see you as Savior. And Lord, I thank you for the time again that you allow us to be here. And I praise you for your name. In your holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving right along, we now come to the section of our agenda where the, there's time for petitions and comments. Ms. Gibson, did anyone sign up in advance to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, notwithstanding that, we will receive comments if someone came for that purpose, if you keep it brief. But citizens should sign up in advance ideally, but the board is, the town council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the approval of town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So that's kind of our preamble for petitions and comment. Is there anyone here who desires to address the council at this time on matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing done, we'll move along. Thank you very much. Counsel, you have before you the agenda for the evening. The next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Suck it.
Thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews. Okay, if you favor adoption of the agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, and there is none. Thank you, the agenda. I'm not aware of any presentations. Madam Clerk, are you aware of any?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. None, Mr. Behringer? All right, thank you. All right, the next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. As counsel, as you can note, there are seven items on the consent agenda. And so the motion now would be in order to approve that agenda.
So move.
Okay.
Okay. If you favor approval of the consent agenda, counsel, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move into the main part of our agenda, which will be, first of all, some public hearings. There will be at least three of these this evening, and one of those will be a quasi judicial hearing, and I'll have more to say about that as we begin, as we come to that item. So at this time, I see Ms. Gabby Lontos Lawler is already at the podium there, so I'm going to recognize her. She's a senior planner, and she will present, be our first presenter this evening as we look at item one, the ANX 2202 401 assemblage. Ms. Lawler.
Evening, Mayor, Town Council. Try to keep this one short and sweet since we have a good amount of public hearings to get through tonight. So this is for the annexation 22-07 or 401 assemblage. This is a contiguous annexation petition, and this is tied to the development project 401 assemblage, otherwise known as PD-Z 2001, which was approved in September 8th, 2020. It's located along Highway 401, just north of Catty Road. And so this petition would follow as a request for public water and sewer for that project. And the area that would be annexed is 267.13 acres and 5.8 acres of adjacent right-of-way along the eastern boundary, for a total of 272.9 acres. And motion before you is to consider adopting annexation, approving the property's annexation into the town's jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll ask counsel if they have any questions for you. Yes, we'll start with Ms. Behringer, if she has anything. Okay. Dellinger? Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
All right, over here, Mr. Matthews?
Questions?
This is a public hearing, so is there someone here who came desiring to speak in regards to this matter this evening? Seeing and hearing none. I believe the hearing will be closed at this time, and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the adoption of, that we adopt, adoption of the ordinance 2022-5137.
Suck it.
Okay, motion is properly made and seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay. You favor the motion? Would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, vote no. Okay, and the matter is approved and passed. Thank you very much. Let's see, is Ms. Jones going to do, or are you going to do this next item? Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, there you are, I'm sorry. So the next public hearing is rezoning CZ SP 2102. And I will recognize, well, Mr. Trezenberg in regards to this matter to at least begin with. Evening, sir.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Normally, this would have been David and Allison doing the joint presentation for you tonight, but I'll give the zoning and then Allison will go over the site plan. So this is Greenbrier Park coming back to you after it was first at a hearing in February. It's now August 1st. The applicant again is Liberty Investment Partners. You have the owner information there. We are talking about the corner, northwest corner of Grovemont and Timber Drive, 17.8 acres. Now that we have the new zoning in place, the current zoning now is 9.6 acres of neighborhood mixed use conditional and 8.2 acres of general residential two. The request is to multifamily conditional, our old MF1. It would be adopted as our new MFA if approved. Here is the site. Again, the street view from a couple of different directions. And here is the current adjacent zoning, just so you can kind of see how it lays out. We now have the commercial mixed use up here at the Home Depot and Target. This was translated to NMX conditional, as was the site across the street south of the high school. And then we have a lot of R2 and R4. Here is the zoning history. Again, this site was rezoned once before, back in 2002. That's how the service business conditional came about. Existing R2 is largely a single and two-family residential district, no more than two dwelling units an acre. The district also allows schools, assembly uses, stables, agriculture, home-based uses, parks, country clubs, and the like. The neighborhood mixed use conditional, the C114, is still back from that zoning in 2002, which still prevails. So the allowed uses there are condos, retail sales, office, research services, education, churches, fraternal lodges, a lot of your assembly uses again, hospitals, medical clinics, nursing and mental health, restaurants, and daycare. This is part of the now residential thoroughfare overlay, which was a combination of the former Timber Drive and Timber Drive East overlays. And there were a bunch of prohibited uses in that list, and those are in your staff report, but none of those conflict with the uses proposed. And so for this rezoning, the uses that have been selected, four out of a possible 21, include two-family dwellings, townhouses, condos, and multifamily. Again, just to note that if, again, adopted, this will be automatically converted to our new MFA district. I'll go through again all the additional voluntary conditions that the applicant has presented, but they are still as they were. Questions about any of these, I'll be glad to come back and revisit them. Neighborhood meetings occurred on July 9th and December 14th, again, as presented previously. The most recent traffic counts, again, from NC DOT, Timber Drive is at 21 and a half thousand vehicles per day, and Grovemont at 3,900. The access summary, Cindy Drive, this does exceed our maximum cul-de-sac length, so therefore TRC has noted that the nonconformity needs to be completed. Greenbrier Road is a paper stub and is not recommended for completion. Homeland Drive is a conforming cul-de-sac, but it is recommended for completion for reasons noted in the staff report. Did want to just touch on Garner Fire Rescue, who conducted an impact study. I included that in full in your staff report this time. They would note that GIS and site plans collectively indicate that travel distances would be cut in half, actually a little more, from three and a half to 1.4 miles, and travel time cut by approximately two-thirds. The overall benefit of 50% reduced response time and travel, in their minds, is very significant and beneficial to all the residents existing and new. And with Allison to go over the site plan.
Sure. Evening, Ms. Jones.
Good morning, Mayor and Town Council. I'm here to present the site plan portion as Jeff already described. The area of the proposed project is 17.8 acres. The front setback is 35 feet, the side is 15 feet, and the rear setback is 25, 35 feet adjacent to, excuse me, Timber Drive. And the corner setback is 25 feet. This is the overall site. Just want to point out a few things for you all. The stormwater pond is located right here. And propose, one of the conditions is to add a six-foot wood fence up in this area over here. The roads will be a real line. A few units are being proposed in this area. The clubhouse and the mail kiosk area is over here. Open field as a part amenities that's being provided for the proposed residence. A mini traffic circle has now been proposed. This was not included in last Seminole. And widen permanent buffers as well. And the undisturbed Timber Drive buffer, this is located about its half, excuse me, not Timber, it's not Timber Drive East, I'm sorry, but Timber Drive.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, understand?
I called, I said Timber Drive East. I'm sorry, it's not Timber Drive East, it's Timber Drive. I got confused, sorry. The landscape buffer and, excuse me, landscape buffer requirements, the tree coverage is a slot and scale of 10 and 12% at the rule, the rule at time of Seminole to be met. The coverage is currently being met for the entire project area with combination of preservation area and street trees that will be added. Subsequent lots will also be checked for compliance at site plan. The permanent buffers are 25 feet adjacent to a single-family uses. And the Timber Drive buffers, 25 feet that should be undisturbed, and will be supplemented with new vegetation as needed. And Grovemont Road is 15 feet wide buffer. And the street trees will be provided every 40 feet along all the roadways. Open space requirements, there's 10% required. Open space areas will be owned and maintained by Greenbrier Park. Required open space areas will be met with qualifying wetland conservation areas, qualifying tree conservation areas, and a play and active recreation amenities that are being provided with this project. Parking and UDO, excuse me, parking and lighting will be reevaluated at the site plan time. However, the UDO requirements are being met by, by site plan and the staff policies, LOD fixtures. And the parking lot, excuse me, the parking is also being met by the resign requirements. Stormwater. Greenbrier Park is a multifamily development site that is located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. This development proposes a wet retention pond and an underground sand filter treatment, impervious surface for development. These devices will satisfy the water quality and quantity requirements at this set for, at this site for nitrogen, 85 TSS removal, and it will detain the 1, 25, and 100-year storm events. A nitrogen offset payment will be required for this project as well. There are some minor wetlands that have been identified along the draw of the blue line, excuse me, the blue line depicted on the site in the graphic below. Much of the area would not be directly affected or impacted. Proof of acquired state and/or federal approvals for direct impacts are required prior to release of construction documents. There's no female floodplains or blue line streams subject to new server buffering requirements. Project will be served by the City of Raleigh Water and Sewer. Water lines are being required to be extended long-term to Drive and Grovemont Road. The City of Raleigh has not identified any upstream properties requiring sewer service extension. However, should they change, further analysis prior to special use permit hearing will be considered. When plan consistency, so if the project is moved forward to the Planning Commission, these are the next steps that will happen. The plan consistency at the PC meeting, Planning Commission meeting, when considering a rezoning request, the Planning Commission is required by the state statute to make a written recommendation regarding inconsistency of the rezoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted policies. These plans include the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, the 2010 and 2018 Garner Transportation Plan, and the Parks Recreation Greenways and Culture Resource Master Plans will.
Just a reminder, when this does come back to you for reasonableness, Town Council will ask to approve a statement in that regard for their decision. And our recommendation today is that once you have heard comments, concerns, and questions, that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission for the next step in review and recommendation regarding the consistency. And that's all that we have for you tonight. The applicant does also have a presentation that they would like to give.
So, counsel, do you have any questions for either Ms. Jones or Mr. Trezenberg? Start with Mr. Singleton.
Just to confirm, this proposed multifamily 1C253, it's about nine units per acre. So that's about three times the density of the existing Greenbrier neighborhood, which is R15, about three units per acre. Correct?
105 units, I'm coming up with 5.9.
But the proposed, this is near the zoning, I'm just reading, I'm reading the agenda package, proposed, and maintain higher, composed of, at around nine units per acre. That's what the condition, that's what the rezoning condition states. I'm sitting here reading it, in my agenda package. Proposed, proposed zoning of 17.8 acre multifamily conditional, MF1 district designed to create, maintain high-density residential neighborhoods composed primarily in multifamily dwellings at densities of around nine units per acre, less than the 14 units per acre at the higher MF2 districts.
That's what David would always put in for the staff report is what the maximum was achievable under the old MF1. But given that they've conditioned it and the site plan is part of the conditions, it's uncapped at the 5.9.
So it's at six units, so it's twice the density of what Greenbrier is. Okay. That's all for now. I got more.
All right, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing this time.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No questions now.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
A couple of clarifying things. What is the status of Parkwood Drive? On the parcel map, it looks like it connects to Timber, but on the site plan, it's unclear whether it's, it's not really delineated because it's not part of this, this site. Is the plan to open Parkwood as well as this road be?
My understanding is that when Timber Drive was built, the right-of-ways were cut. And so today, we still show an intersecting right-of-way, but that was not allowed to be a full point of access. So at this point in time, there's no plans that I'm aware of by either DOT or the town to reopen that connection. But it's, not to say that it couldn't, but the right-of-ways do intersect.
Another question with that intersect, that entrance, is there a Another question with that intersect, that entrance, is there a turn lane designed for that entrance or not off Timber coming in?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll let the applicant speak to that more specifically.
Another question is kind of similar with the frontage on Grove Mount. And there are those properties that aren't part of this development, but is there a plan to do a turn lane in there or not?
I know that there's a dedicated left coming westbound. I'm not quite sure about going east.
That'd be no, that's a no?
I'm not aware that there is one going east, but again, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Barry.
I have one question, just for this, our benefit and the sake of the people here. Can we put the map back up there and show exactly where the access points are off of Grove Mount, off of Timber, and if there are any access points back into Greenbrier
So here's Parkwood up here. And that's, and that's where it's dead end, it's not connected through. This would be the new entrance here. This is the Homewood connection. This is the Greenbrier Drive, but it's just a paper right-of-way, not proposed for connection. Here's the Cindy Drive connection and the entrance off of Grove Mount. There is that dedicated left, but I'm not seeing that there's enough room here to do the dedicated right going in.
Does that entrance off of Grove Mount go directly to Cindy Drive?
See it in here directly to this mini roundabout, and you can either go straight, right, or around the roundabout and to the left.
So the roundabout is designed for Cindy Drive, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, that was on the advice of the engineering department in response to some of the comments and to do some proactive traffic calming.
Yeah, okay. Mr.
I got one more.
Okay, well, I was going to get to Mr. Matthews.
Okay, look, Mr. Matthews.
Okay, he's going to defer to you, Ms. Singleton, go ahead.
If application was coming here, in here for the current zoning for business, would we still seek to have them connect to the Cindy Drive and to, to the two roads that are suggested to be connected to? If it was a business?
It would be pretty hard not to. Again, the, the, the existing stub is beyond what's allowed by ordinance, so that would have to be fixed one way or the other. Either connected or somehow permanently put into a cul-de-sac. The houses are in a historic eligible district, so any improvements that are going to have like major impacts to that are going to be questionable from historic preservation standpoint. And if this is their only access off of Grove Mount Road without some other point of access, for this road to come in, it's, I don't know how. But it could be done, you know, as a, as an internal drive, things of that nature. But again, the fact that you have this road coming in here in order to meet whatever, and again, Chris Johnson is not here tonight, but just what little I know about the engineering rules for how the roads get aligned, I don't know that you can get enough distance that they wouldn't intersect each other anyhow.
I just can remember when it was resigned back 20 years ago, that the neighborhood did want it connected, and there was even talk of, at the Cindy Drive connection, putting in a gate for emergency services, fire, EMS, rescue, police, to use if they had to get in there, but to keep other vehicles out, so, just what I was asking. Thank you.
Is that still a possibility, what you're just talking about? The gate for the fire department, because we do that a lot of places, been, been on the fire department before. Could a gate be put there? It would actually close off Cindy Drive.
I'm not aware that the town has ever entertained putting a gate on a public road straight through. If it was just public on one side and private on the other, that would be different, but not on a public street.
We just, it spring drive for the high school. It was closed certain times of the day, recently.
Right, but I don't believe that the state or spring drive, that part that was off, I don't know that that was, I don't know, somebody else would have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the maintenance was given over to the school at that point. I'm not aware.
We did have gates up on the public street, and it wasn't that long ago. That's my whole point is, it was allowed for the school to be closed for certain times because of so much foot traffic going from one side to the other. Because they were using the formerly theater, which is now used as a school, there was so much foot traffic, they were having issues. And so it was closed during the school day. Okay.
Have one. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Follow-up. I think the question was, could we put a gate? Now, have we done it before? And I guess it starts the question, is it prohibited? Well, I start from the standpoint of, is it prohibitive? If it's not a prohibitive, then we could, it could be done, correct?
Unfortunately, I met the person that answered that question. That would be engineering.
All right, thank you, Jeff and Ms. Jones. I'm going to recognize who's here to speak in conjunction with the applicant. You would, I'm sure you'll identify yourself and your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. We do have a number of members of our team available to answer any questions as well. We have John Barker and George Deloche, the developers of this project. We have John Callahan, our engineer, and we have Ryanal Stevenson, who's right next to me, our traffic engineer, who may be able to help answer some of the questions that were just coming up. But at the outset, I'm sure council recalls this case coming before you back in February, and we've been on a bit of a pause trying to sort out these street connection issues. And we appreciate the importance of those connections, the importance of the issue to the town, and we've been monitoring the town's deliberation on how to approach these street connections. Suffice to say that our team is prepared to follow the town's lead and do what the council wishes for these connections to understand. In the latest iteration of the street connection policy, that there is objective criteria that may require street connections in some instances, and potential for an amendment to the policy that would allow, at the council's discretion, based on, again, other factors, but the opportunity to remove stubs in certain situations. Our team is prepared to develop this project either with the connections or without, and so we're ready to go in either way. But as presented to council tonight, based on our understanding of the objective criteria that was initially presented in discussions with staff, we have put together a plan to show you that shows those connections in place with traffic calming measures to help mitigate the impacts of those connections. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Council's familiar with the location. I won't, it won't, won't spend too much time on it, but we're northwest of the intersection of Grove Mount and Timber, just over 17 acres in total. Next slide, please. Just setting the stage for the existing zoning as well as what the future land use map calls for. So with the changes to the UDO, we are now R2 in neighborhood mixed use, and that former Timber Drive overlay is now the residential thoroughfare overlay. So a mixture of commercial uses are permitted on the section in red on your map there that was formerly serviced business and then residential uses on that R2 zone. Importantly, as, as council knows, when we look as a developer and as a project team to look at a site and how it should be developed, we look to the future land use map for guidance. And so that's where our team started here. The future land use map calls for a number of residential uses, but it's the high-density residential category. And so it allows a number of single-family detached, quadplex, up-to-town home style residential uses. And so that's what we're proposing here in the concept plan in direct conformity with that high-density residential designation. Now, what that designation also calls for is no less than five units per acre. So that's supposed to be the bottom end, and in that MF1 district, the question that came up earlier, that district alone allows up to nine units per acre, and then MF2, which would conform with this, could allow even more. But what our team has proposed is something quite a bit less, and so we have conditioned the maximum units per acre at six. So it's actually the low end of what the future land use map calls for. If we could go to the next slide, please. So this is what the plan looked like back in February. And so if you recall, we took a pause in February to help sort out these street stub connection issues. So as presented in February, it was a rezoning to MF1, which would now be MFA, 118 units with 21 conditions. At the time in February, it was eight units per acre. There's prohibition of less desirable uses, essentially telling you exactly what the uses would be here. We have a number of conditions that tell you where you're going to get wider buffers and fences to help protect our neighbors to the west and to the north. Extensive architectural conditions to ensure high-quality developments compatible with the neighborhood, and then enhanced stormwater controls, 100-year stormwater controls. We felt that this was a solid project and was consistent with the comprehensive plan back in February, but we haven't wasted the time since we were back in front of council. We've met with a number of folks, we've listened to staff, we've listened to council, and we've listened to our neighbors, and we've made a number of projects that make this project much better and much more compatible with the surrounding area. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So this is the updated plan, and I know it's not easy to see just switching from one to the other how it's, how it changes, so I'm going to zoom in on a few specific points in a moment. But the overall big picture changes, rezoned to MFA, that's the new designation. The number of units in the plan, which is part of this project and part of the approval, will also have to come back for a special use permit after the rezoning process. It's down to 105, so dropped 13 units, dropped the density, opened up the site a little bit, made more open space, tried to make the project more compatible. Conditioned to a max of six units per acre, essentially to conform to the, the math of the acre, the acres by the units, I think it's 5.89 is what it actually comes down to. We made extensive site plan changes that are worth going through to see just how much the projects change in, in all the right locations. Our architectural conditions all remain, and there's one update just to make it a little better in one point. If we could go to the next slide, please. So as I said, we've tried to absorb as much feedback as possible since February. So on the left-hand column here, these are all the topics that we heard. These are all the comments that we heard from council, from staff, and otherwise. And then on the right-hand side is how we've addressed those. So every single thing we heard, we endeavored to, took it to address, and we've done it with this updated project. Again, we dropped density, we've loosened up the site a bit and made it a lower-density project. Stub-street connections, as I said at the outset, we're willing to comply with the town's policy. Whatever way it goes here, our team's prepared to either make the connections or not make the connections, and, and it would still work for the project we're presenting. Traffic calming. So if we are required to make street stub connections, we've got traffic calming in place. And so that's that traffic circle that was shown in staff's presentation, and I'll zoom in in a moment. And what that does, when you come in and you hit a traffic circle, in order to make a left, you have to essentially slow down and go right to go around it. And so that's going to mitigate, cut through traffic, and really slow folks down and make that a less desirable opportunity. And our traffic engineer can talk about it in more detail, but our analysis actually shows that the connections we're providing, if that is the route we go, is actually a net benefit to the neighbors to the west and to the north, that there'd be more traffic leaving through our site than going back through the other way. Straight streets and front setbacks. There's some townhome projects that, that I've visited in Garner, and I've seen how some of these projects with just one straight street and one similar project, product type all aligned, doesn't look all that nice. And so what we've done is we've added some bends in the roads to create a little more architectural kind of interesting nature and a better feel on the ground, and I'll show you that in a moment. Setbacks in, in realigning streets, we've created a little more space in a few areas, including along where our property aligns, along Timber Drive. Open space, we added a large playfield. We also put that on the western side where it's adjacent to the Greenbrier neighborhood, again, creating separation between our development and the existing community to the west and to the north. The Grove Mount frontage, I'll talk about this one when we see the plan, but essentially we reconfigured some lots to be more compatible and dropped some units there as well. Timber Drive frontage, I already talked about, but we've dropped density along Timber Drive. We've created more separation to make that section of the project feel more open and help to advance that vision within the overlay district to having woods, a nice wooded frontage, and then space so you're not looking at the back of a project. And our architectural features remain strong, but we did add a condition that requires offsets for units on the rear of buildings, so to the extent you could see them, they're separated, again, adding architectural interest. Next slide, please. So this is just a summary of the changes at a high level. Some of them may jump out to you right away, and some we have to zoom in a little closer, but old plans on the left-hand side, new plans on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. And so here, we are zooming in on the entrance from Grove Mount and that western boundary of our property and how that's changed. That's been an area of focus with that street connection with Grove Mount, with Greenbrier to the west, and, and how our project impacts them. And so a number of key changes there. Jumping to, back to a question, council asked of staff, so right now, as proposed on Grove Mount there, there's a dedicated left turn lane, there's not space to have a right turn lane, and it wasn't warranted by the, the traffic study. But let's look at the changes we've made, because I think these are important, and they really help to show how we've strived to be a good neighbor and a compatible neighborhood. I tried to mark with text and then color the corresponding changes, but starting with the purple at the top, we used to have five units in that location backing up to the Greenbrier neighborhood. Dropped those units in connection with other changes, moved the clubhouse to that location. Again, opens up the area a bit. We added a large playfield that's shown in green, and we put it right next to the neighborhood where we formerly had a street going through. So right next to Greenbrier now, we've moved the street further away, and we've added a passive playfield while also maintaining fencing and buffers to create proper spacing and to be more harmonious with the folks to the west of us. Now, in connection with that change, you see us moving the street to the east. So our internal north-south street that eventually would connect south to Grove Mount has now been shifted, creating further separation. It takes you to the blue traffic circle, and that's where our traffic calming comes in. So to the extent that stub is connected to, we've got a traffic calming device, a little roundabout there to slow folks down, discourage that cut-through, cut-through traffic. Then going to the bottom in red, that's the final change that I alluded to, is a little specific and you need to see on the plan, but we formally showed five units that were perpendicular to Grove Mount. And so what you had for folks to the west, although we had a pretty substantial buffer there, you're looking at the rear of five units. And so in talking with staff, we've rotated those units to now be parallel to Grove Mount. It resulted in dropping from five units to three in that location, but now, instead of having five backyards facing one home, you've got one side yard. So a lot more compatible in that location, again, dropping units, dropping density in that area and opening up the space. Next slide, please. Now, Timber Drive frontage, I don't have the nice colors to show all the changes, because this, I think, speaks just at a high level, how you can see how it's changed, it's opened up a bit. And so along Timber Drive, one of the comments we heard from council at the last hearing is, what's it going to look like on Timber Drive? We've got our overlay, we've got the buffer, but what's it going to look like there? Are we going to have stuff too close to Timber Drive? And so we listened to that, and we made a change, a number of changes, to help loosen that up and further accomplish the overlay district goal. And so driving that are two big changes. One is bringing that internal street, creating a bend, and making the bend come out from Timber Drive. That creates more separation, more space. When we got more space, we didn't throw more units in there. Instead, we actually dropped a bunch of units. So we formerly had a number of five building units there, and we dropped all but one of those five building units down to four. And so what that does is it shrinks the buildings and it creates more separation than between each building. So opening up a lot more space, and hopefully you can see, just looking at them side by side, just how much looser and how much more open that can be than activated by benches and things like that, so that it is truly a usable space. Next slide, please. So again, high level, this is the overall change between the two projects, but you've dropped density significantly, lost 13 units overall, down to a max of six units per acre, which is on the low end of that high-density residential designation. But where we've made substantial changes there to be more compatible with the neighborhood to the north and to the west of us, to create more separation, and to do our best to follow the town's comprehensive plan goals to have compatible neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Our, our conditions are extensive. I won't go through them again, but we've endeavored with written conditions to show exactly where we're doing buffers, exactly where we're doing fences, a number of architectural conditions to show exactly what, what the products are going to look like, and then enhance stormwater controls. But with the architectural conditions, if we could jump to the next slide, just want to show what these will look like. So we've got some updated renderings. You can see it's not one uniform product type, but there's a couple of product types, a lot of masonry, and all the elements we've committed to in our conditions we wanted to show to you, because we do think that this is a nice-looking product. And with the differentiation in height and stories, they start to look a lot more like single-family detached homes than just the regular run-of-the-mill townhomes. Next slide, please. And want to show you what the rear of the units look, because we do have conditions that address that, and creating separation offsets with the rear of the units, but in the image to the bottom, or in the bottom of these two, you're not going to see those anyway, because we do have the buffering and screening. So that's what they'd look like if you're standing there, but in the end, there's going to be trees that shield them, and we have proper separation for our, for our homes. Next slide, please. Last thing I wanted to touch on, at the last council hearing, we had a neighbor come up commenting on our stormwater controls and noting that you can see the stormwater port. commenting on our stormwater controls and noting that you can see the stormwater pond on the north of the site, but as the neighbor commented, that's not where you need stormwater here, stormwater controls. There's a low point right where our project hits Cindy Drive, where there's existing stormwater problems. Now, we didn't have an opportunity to point this out at the last hearing, but we actually do have stormwater controls in that location, exactly where the neighbors had asked for them to be. And so I wanted to make that clear. So that's the lower of the two arrows points to that location. So where we have that playfield, actually, under that playfield, you wouldn't even see it, is underground stormwater controls. And they're enhanced stormwater controls. We've got conditions that require control up to the hundred-year storm, so that I just wanted to make clear that that one point, that was one of the things that came from the neighbors, had been addressed with this. Next slide, please. So our project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the growth map designation of high-density residential, and there are a number of policies that we're consistent with. We've endeavored, and we've worked extensively, to show our commitment to be good neighbors, to have a compatible project, and we're ready and willing to continue to do that, especially in connection with these street stubs, as we continue that dialogue. We've got a number of folks here that are happy to answer any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time and for your very thorough presentation. I'll see if council has questions. Mr. Matthews, you have anything?
Certainly. Like all the changes been made, I still think probably the, one of the most important things, and I know Ms. Berenger alluded to it also, is the stub-out type things in respect to an existing older neighborhood. And if we can reach a good honorable conclusion, that we can make everybody happy on the stub-outs, obviously, they don't want them, and I don't think you guys want them either, so let's find a way to fix that, and I think it'd be a whole lot, it'll go a lot better. That's just my two cents worth.
Sure. I'll skip around a little bit and go to Mr. Vance over here next.
Appreciate the revisions that you made. They are quite evident, and with the roundabout that's been placed in there, the initial traffic calming for one of the stubout locations, all the adjustments are quite clear. And tonight, we are not making a decision, are we? It's going for the planning consideration. Okay. Well, I have no further questions at this point.
Okay. All right, I'll come back to Ms. Shinglin.
I still have the concern for something that's twice as dense as a neighborhood that's been around for over fifty years. This is an abrupt transition from R-15 to multifamily and connecting to it with the two roads. And I don't think anyone up here on this desk up here, whatever you want to call it, where we're sitting up here, this bench, would want it beside them. And I know how the neighbors in Greenbrier feel. I appreciate the changes that you've made, the buffers. The buffers are nice, nice, fine and dandy, but the connections are the issue. They don't want connections in their neighborhood. And again, it's a transition from something that's R-15 to something that is twice as dense, and yes, it could be more dense, you're correct. It could be nine or even fourteen units if it was multifamily, too. That's much more dense. And I'm just, I've just had issues. I know what the long-range plan says, the new UDO, I vote against the new UDO, because I don't agree with everything in there. I don't think these pockets on a four-lane road, everything should be filled with residential. You still have to have opportunities for all of the sense of business, and to me, this is a, should be a mix of an office and business corridor, and I just have issues with it.
Ms. Berenger, anything?
Sir, I do like the changes in the lower density. It does look much better, the way that the townhomes are angled is much more attractive. But I still have, I have major heartburn about Cindy Drive. I rode over there over the weekend, and that, that street is, what, two blocks long at the most, and dead ends into a stubout. And to put all that traffic going through there as a main entrance off of Grove Mount just doesn't seem ideal to me. I'd like to see some alternatives.
And Mr. Dellinger.
As was stated, we're not making a decision tonight, but I do, I know you guys have been at this a long time. I was, I went to your community meeting, one of them, I think it was last summer. And so y'all have made a lot of changes, your attention to our future land use map, our comprehensive plan, feedback from the town, looking at a lot of the conditions and trying to meet or exceed them, and your patience with regards to this stub, I won't say fiasco, but debate that we're having. I can commend the patience you guys have shown and the changes you've made. You're trying, I can tell you're really trying to be good neighbors, and it's not always easy, and I know not everyone will be happy regardless of what this ends up when it comes back to us. I have some similar reservations, but, you know, I think it's time for a planning commission to look at it and for it to come, give their recommendations or Sharp Group. And also, if the public has more to say, they can say it here, they can go to Planning Commission, and we'll be doing our work, and we'll see what happens.
And thank you, Mr. Dellinger. That's a point well made. Council doesn't have to make final decisions tonight, and the planning commission has a role to play in this, and referring it to them, I hope is what we're about ready to do. But any more questions for this gentleman? Anybody?
I do want to say one more thing, as negative as I am about the project. I will commend you for the open field. Thank you for putting an open field in. We've had some projects approved here that, open field has been 500 square feet, which is pretty pitiful. This is a nice effort at trying to address open field for, if development passed, someone's approved, for kids to go out and play. I say this from firsthand experience, because I live beside a townhome. My office is beside townhomes. There's a spare lot about that size where they go out and play quite often. So they have no place to play, so they go there to play. So I will commend you for the open field. And then putting the stormwater underneath it, that's using your space, your land wisely. So thumbs up for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there others who wish to present, or do you want to see if council has questions for other members of the applicant team? Did anybody come, plan to make any photos?
Who else planning to present, just available for questions?
All right. Okay, council, for this presentation, had a lot of questions answered. Again, we're going to move to the planning commission, but at any rate, any questions from council? Yeah, yeah, I'm going to get to them. But I'm trying to get to council first, and then we'll go. Yeah, all right. So, Mr. Vance, anything?
Other questions?
Okay, Mr. Dellinger. No, Ms. Berenger. Okay, and Mr. Shinglin, none? Okay, and Mr. Matthews, okay. All right, well, this is a, this is a public hearing. And again, I remind the public the sequence that we're, that will happen after tonight. But if you came and desiring to speak on this matter, we will ask you to try to keep your comments to about three minutes, be concise. If, in fact, there are a number of people who are here to essentially repeat the same thing, if there's a spokesperson for a group of several of you, that would be a preferable way to make the presentation. How many people are here tonight who came with the idea of, okay? I'm sorry?
Were you saying what, to speak or just in regards to this?
I'm not sure I heard that correctly.
To speak or just in regards to the project?
Okay.
Did you want to know who was speaking? I think there was...
Do we know who was speaking?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Everybody that raised their hands the first time does not want to speak.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was supposing.
Yeah, you might need to do a recount.
So, okay, I've got, let's see, I've got one, two, three, three on this side and one on this side. Okay, five. Is that right? Okay. So who wants to go first? I recognize you right here, and...
I know where you got this gentleman. He's back in the corner over here.
I thought I counted him.
You got him? Okay.
Okay. If not, I recognize you.
Jennifer McLaughlin. I'm at forty-four fifteen Parkwood Drive, so just on the other side here. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association in Greenbrier. So I do just want to commend the developers and the town for the communication throughout this process. The developers have been wonderful at updating us, keeping us in the loop about what's going on. I do think they've done a great job at listening to our feedback and doing the best they can. So we appreciate that. I think a couple of things that come to mind, as I do live across from this property that's being developed, we've seen an uptick recently of people, cops, having to come and search the woods for people that have shoplifted and for things like that that have been going on in those woods. So I personally will be glad to see something go in there that will reduce the crime and the activity happening in that area, because it is, there's a lot of commercial already in that area that seems to have an impact on our woods back there, while I love them and would love for them to stay forever. I do not want to see this become business or commercial use. I think that has the possibility to be more disturbing to the neighbors that butt up against that property. So I think I can speak for most of our neighbors that say we would prefer some sort of residential development in this area, and so we are pleased with the concessions that they're making and the things that they're doing to, you know, make it more desirable to be along our neighborhood. I think they have done a great job. However, I do think we have major concerns with the stubs and the connectivity still. I appreciate the reduced density. I think that will help. But as they pointed out, we have over three-hundred-and-fifty houses in our neighborhood. This will become a good, right, a good traffic pattern for people in our neighborhood to access. And so not only will it have impact on the hundred or so units that are here, but the three-hundred-and-fifty people, it will change their traffic patterns considerably and impact how things go. Also, I still hold fast that that Grove Mount light, because it is only a blinking yellow, could force all of those hundred units to come through the neighborhood to reach seventy, because otherwise, they'll be stuck at that blinking yellow light, which you could sit at for thirty minutes sometimes during, during high-traffic areas. So I want to just commend the developer. I also want to just continue to voice our concerns on the stubs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. I was going to go to this gentleman right here, maybe? Yeah, you're part of the spokesman group, right there.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mark Sidwell. I live at five-zero-one-four Winter Locken Road, which is basically the road just to the west of Camellia Drive that you see here. I finished the house in 2018, and we moved from Indiana to come down here, because we love the neighborhood. So I wanted to thank the mayor for getting back in touch with me. Appreciate talking to you. Appreciate those that responded to my email. Thank you very much. I'd like to address a few things that I've talked with every neighbor. There's not a single neighbor, not a single one, that wants through. We have people that walk Camellia Drive every day. That's part of their exercise routine. They're in their eighties or nineties. We've got people walking around this neighborhood that have been there fifty-plus years. The last thing they want is somebody busting ass through the neighborhood like they do today already. We're already dealing with a block over on Winter Locken. They're already cutting through from seventy all the way over, all the way through to four-oh-one, or even to Grove Mount. I've heard nothing about a Grove Mount study. Grove Mount, you can't even get out on the west end of it. You might as well just turn left, or I'm sorry, forget turning left, turn right, go down, and do a whole loop back around, because you won't, you won't go left. Or I'm, it just doesn't happen. There's too much traffic. Somebody touched on the other one, on the other side of Timber Drive. They've shut that, they don't even show you the road over there, because they shut it down to prevent traffic from going into the high school. So what does that tell us about the traffic flow off Grove Mount? The other thing I have a little concern with is I thought that the timber overlay was a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot leeway or buffer from the Timber Drive access point. I haven't heard anything about that lately. Maybe you guys can educate me a little bit. Two-hundred-and-fifty feet to the west of Timber Drive cuts this thing in half, if that. So I don't know where that all went. Maybe we can address that at planning meetings. I will be at every one of them. I also wanted to let you know that the folks that have been in this neighborhood, and in fact, I talked to the gentleman that lives in that big block that they're having to build around, that the stub is a paper stub, Mr. Massengale, he, I don't know if he's here tonight, he was going to try to make it, evidently could not. He's not for this at all. You're putting a pool, he's going to have to listen to people having a good time in his backyard. He's got a pool, you know, he probably understands people having a good time around a pool. I'm sure he doesn't appreciate it in his backyard. Just like you guys alluded to, people have lived in this neighborhood fifty years. They don't appreciate any cut-through traffic. They don't appreciate any new business, any increase, and we haven't even touched on the erosion issues. My neighbor died.
Mr. Sidwell, I'm going to try to be patient.
Okay. I'll cut it really short.
We have several other people who want to...
I'll cut it really short.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. The erosion issue is not going to be fixed by what you see on this plan. I'm not an expert. The planning commission can hit on it harder. I will plan to be there to make sure that they hit on it a little harder. We have erosion issues in this neighborhood that have not been addressed and are continuing to get worse, and that's before this huge impermeable surface is put in, okay? I'm just really concerned. I know you guys have done hard work in making this happen, okay? But we need to stop the cut-through traffic. We need to stop the erosion issues, and we need to stop cutting trees and green space out of our communities. This is a huge, huge opportunity for green space. Great area for a park. I'll leave it on a positive note.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Someone on this side, if you'll do your best to adhere to our timeframe. Thanks, sir.
Name is Joe McCormick. I live at forty-nine-twelve Cindy Drive, so I am the house directly next to the new open field. While I'd like to say, you know, I appreciate the work the HOA has done and the developer has done, I do feel that the communication has been extremely lacking, being the property that directly abuts this project. I have heard almost zero communication that hasn't been initiated by myself. I attend all the HOA meetings. I attended the planning meetings. I've been here, I was here in February, so I just hesitate to feel that that comment is true. I do want to point out with the stub, I won't beat a dead horse here, but it was brought up in the debate on the stubs last week, I believe, that the problem here is that this stub is connecting to an older, narrower street that does not have sidewalk access. There are no sidewalks in the entire neighborhood, so pumping that traffic through is going to be pretty impactful, especially for the people that do enjoy their walks in the neighborhood. I'd also like to piggyback on my neighbor's comment here. I just wanted to point out that this is a great place to potentially look at adding a park and recreation facility. Looking at the park and rec master plan, there is a call for a greenway to cross through the northern part of this property. Additionally, there is a bus stop proposed there, and if you look at the north side of Garner over here, there's very limited park access for the majority of these developments in the area. There are another four-hundred-plus units being developed within a one-mile radius of our neighborhood that have already been approved, and there's limited access for these folks as well. So just want to call out that there needs to be some attention given to the greater context of this development and not looking at it as much in a vacuum with the other road development projects in the area, the four-oh-one, Super Street, the five-forty extension that's going to connect an old stage. There's a lot to consider here that is not being presented, because this is being treated as a project inside of a vacuum. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Who's the next speaker? Was it this lady here? Okay, I'll get, I'm sorry, I'll get to you next.
I'm Judith Mathis, three-oh-four Grove Mount Road. I'm the middle biggest lot that's going to be completely surrounded. I had no idea if a study's been done of Grove Mount Road, but since I've lived in that house since nineteen-seventy-eight, I can tell you it's a lot of traffic for a residential area which has no sidewalks. a lot of traffic for a residential area which has no sidewalks. Um, we gotta get a lot of foot traffic when school's in session from the high school. I don't want my piece of land to be, to lose its value. Uh, and I wanna be protected from all these people that are gonna live back there. I don't want, we have people that go in the woods. There used to be homeless people that would stay in there. But this just leaves all of us in older homes, and we aren't in Greenbrier, but we're the same age. But, um, it just leaves us at the mercy of what anybody wants to do with the land around us. I have no problem with development, although I'm getting tired in Wake County that everywhere you go that there's trees, they're tearing them down and building something. But, um, I don't understand on Grove Mount Road, i-if you go in the morning, 'cause I went to work there many years, if you are at the light to turn left onto Timber, they are lined way past my house for the turn lane. If you go down to Stage Road in the morning or the evening, they are backed up past the church, waiting to get out onto Old Stage Road to get out. So I don't know what this kind of traffic would do to, to the road at all. I don't know how you think people are gonna move around.
Thank you very much. Um, I was gonna go back to this side over here. Was there another person I missed? Everybody, everybody's, okay, thank you. Uh, this lady right here, I recognize you.
Oh, good evening. My name, excuse me, is Sarah Connor. I live at five oh one four Winter Locken, uh, with that gentleman there. Uh, we're basically a block west of Camellia. So we would inevitably see a lot of traffic, uh, because Winter Locken can take you straight out to Jessup, which is currently the only entrance that has a stoplight. So for our older residents who don't wanna risk trying to get out onto Grove Mount or to, uh, you know, any of our other exits without a stoplight, they'll be going that way. Um, so that's increased traffic that is unexpected for all of our residents. Um, I don't wanna, uh, repeat too much of what other people have said, but one comment, uh, that was made by the developer about the traffic calming circle, um, that's only gonna calm traffic right there in that moment. I mean, there's an accelerator pedal that people will be pushing as soon as they get off of Cindy to race through the neighborhood. And the streets over there, like Winter Locken, are pretty wide, and we already have issues with people speeding. At one point, a neighbor has put up a your speed, uh, private sign thing that he had that was telling people that they were going fast. And I stopped there one day, and the average person goes thirty-five miles an hour. And there are people and, and kids, and that's with people who live in the neighborhood and have something to lose if they were to hit one of their neighbors. So imagine if it's a bunch of townhomes that, for all I know, they could be rented out. I don't know who's gonna live in these units. Um, the other comment I wanted to make, and I'll finish that, is that this is in no way, shape, or form like the current neighborhood. All of our homes are very similarly built, a lot of split levels, um, with at least, you know, half an acre of property associated with it, a lot of mature trees, all of which are existing in that woods area that they're proposing to develop, which will be coming down, um, inevitably being replaced by, you know, smaller, more decorative trees. You can't replace a two-hundred-year tree with its, with a, another similarly heightened tree, right? So, um, all of the water absorption and things that those trees do now, that's why they're gonna have to mitigate. We wouldn't have to mitigate if we left the trees as they are, or, or, you know, added some, some drainage or something that would help out with any other issues. So in no way, shape, or form would that, uh, fit into our neighborhood. I'm sorry, can't. And I appreciate you especially for going out and visiting and seeing our current conditions and what they look like. I appreciate the effort you've put there, and I appreciate you two for considering how that's not like what our current living situation is and why all, most all of us have moved here. So, thank you.
Thank you. By my count, that's five persons. I originally counted five, but did I miss one over here? Was there a person on this side?
I'm in the back.
Okay, come on up, please, sir. We'll ask you to adhere to our.
I'll be there in thirty seconds.
Frame, okay.
My name's James Kirkman, and I live on Parkwood. Um, homeland dumps into my front yard. If you miss that stop sign, you come up on my front porch. Cindy, the whole neighborhood, um, this is a high pro- a high-yield profit coming into a neighborhood that's been there forever. I bought eight years ago in there. Our streets, three-quarters of the houses have small children on Parkwood, all the way till it hits the stop sign. I can't imagine what's gonna come up and out of there and how fast you're gonna come. It's kinda disturbing. And I appreciate the fact that y'all are looking at these accesses, Cindy being the old. I can't buy the idea that first responders, um, all these years have been a beginning and out of Greenbrier, and all of a sudden we're opening up Greenbrier, that being some of the justification for first responders. I just don't, you know, and it's gonna put Grove Mount, there's people on Grove Mount in a, Grove Mount in a bad situation. Um, I just appreciate y'all not just jumping up there and letting this thing fly through and looking at it. And, um, God bless everybody.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your, uh, conciousness. Okay, I believe that's, uh, all the spokespeople's. Am I correct on that? Did I miss anybody? All right, um, I believe, council, any, uh, furthering comments, uh, and then I'm gonna close the public hearing and, uh, ask for a motion. Happy to hear from anybody on the day I was here. Anything, Mr. Vance, down here, down here.
You know, I've always gotta comment. Um, just looking from a, a common sense logical standpoint is if this was passed and you encourage, or you expect people to come out on Grove Mount, you got four lights to cycle through to head west on seventy, or three lights if you're gonna keep going on Timber, uh, in Raleigh. Grove Mount, the one at the shopping center, and then Highway seventy in Timber. But you can cut through Greenbrier and get to Jessup Drive to the one light. Now, anybody with common sense can look at that and say, which way are you gonna go? The Greenbrier residents, if they had a access, uh, closer up here, if it wasn't down at the church at, uh, Maxwell Street, yeah, by, by the, uh, behind the two churches, behind Fred A. Smith, they would still cut through because it's quicker. So you just have somebody, you have to look at it and scale. Like, how's the quick, what's the shortest distance between two points, and how many light cycles would you have to wait? That's just something, something to consider.
Go ahead.
And we all know that, that, that the intersection at seventy and Timber's gonna be changed one day to, uh, whatever it's called now, but still, there'll still be the lights that will still be there.
Did I get you? Okay. All right, um, let's see. Ms. Attorney, have I covered everything now? Is it time to close the public hearing, I believe? All right. Thank you all for your, for your time. I'll close the public hearing, and, um, as council, um, knows, the next step would be to refer this to planning commission and, um, let them, um, do their work on this, and it'll come back to us. Is there a motion?
I move the, the condition of zoning request CZS SP twenty-one oh two be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the plan consistency.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Seven.
Okay, thank you both. All right, uh, council, the motion is before you to refer to the planning commission, which is the standard procedure here. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, would you vote no? Okay. Thank you. We will, um, that's the action that will be taken, and I appreciate, uh, those of you who came tonight and your sensitivity to, uh, honoring our time limit rules as best you could. I know it's a hot topic. Uh, I would just say to several of you, as you go, uh, when I moved to Garner, I moved into an older neighborhood. Some of you may know it, Tiffany Woods, but we used to drive from Tiffany Woods up to Greenbrier when my daughter was small because she took piano lessons over there, uh, with a young lady in your neighborhood. I'm trying to remember, I think it was on Forest Drive. Cindy, uh, was her name, was Cynthia somebody, but anyway, you know who I'm talking about. It's a lovely neighborhood, you know, these older neighborhoods, and we're sensitive to that, but, you know, times are changing and, um, you know, the way they build houses now are quite the same as they used to. I had an older house myself. Anyway, thank you for letting me, uh, muse a little bit there. Thank you all. If you desire to leave at this time, if you would do so quietly, we'd appreciate that. Still have business to do. Thank you. Okay, as they are, as they're leaving, uh, let me, uh, go ahead and ask if you are here for the next hearing, uh, and need to be sworn, I'd ask you to go back towards the town clerk, uh, there. Um, I must, uh, share with you some information regarding the next hearing, which will be a quasi, excuse me, a quasi-judicial hearing. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing and an impartial decision maker. So I have to ask council members this question or these questions. Do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Have any of you had ex parte communications, or do any of you have close familial ties, business or others, association relationships with an affected person, or have financial interest in the outcome? If so, you should signify. Anybody?
Well, I'm saying.
Okay. This effect finding hearing on incompetent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts of property values, traffic safety, or Noah's levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. Town clerk will swear in the witnesses for this case. Have you already had a chance to do that, uh, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I should, uh, add, uh, also, the permit application and staff report contained in the agenda packet are offered as evidence in this case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or a person withstanding. So with that instruction, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'll recognize Mr. Trezenberg.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, special use permit hearing tonight for, um, what's known as INQ forty-three-hundred. Uh, the applicant owner is an LLC entitled GNI X forty-three-hundred Fayetteville LLC. Um, this is the old Kmart building, uh, and it sits on twenty-six-point-seven-three acres. This was submitted originally back in February, um, seeking to redevelop and reuse the one thousand, or, sorry, one hundred and seventy-two-thousand-sixty-eight square-foot building, uh, as commercial flex space. Uh, their list of proposed uses here could potentially be light industrial service, flex space, manufacturing and production, that would be indoor only, um, office, medical office, and storage warehouse. Uh, the current zoning, um, most of the service business got transferred to commercial mixed use. This was one of those. There were a few others we missed. Um, so we will be bringing this one back to you as a kind of a correction, rezoning. Um, as you may recall, service business also included almost all of the light industrial uses because they were indoor and not outdoor activities and not noxious types of uses. Um, so we will be coming back to you at some point with a recommendation to, uh, make this actually light industrial general zoning. Um, and then that way we won't be creating any non-conformities, uh, potentially with uses. Um, the setbacks, though, are, uh, being treated right now under the old SB zoning when it was submitted. Uh, the front setback is thirty-five. In the rear and side, we have either zero or twenty-five feet, depending on the adjacent zoning, and the corner is thirty-five as well. Um, neighborhood meeting was held on July eighteenth at the Gardner Senior Center, uh, six o'clock PM with one attendee. Uh, the inquiry there was mostly just limited to the scope and extent of construction. Um, here is the site plan. There's not a whole lot to really point to, um, as far as rework. What you're seeing here is just a little bit of rework along the front of the building, um, some of the pedestrian access points. Uh, there were some changes back here, I know, with the drainage. Um, we did work with them to get sidewalk extended from four oh one. Uh, there previously was no sidewalk into the old Kmart. Um, it connects into the, uh, sidewalk system there in front of Auto Zone and comes around, and although we can't get all the way to the building, we at least get to this kind of protected part of the parking lot, um, 'cause here is the main entrance. And so you would actually have to turn to get in there, um, 'cause there is this median now that divides the whole way down to the building. So this should remain the main traffic flow here. Um, so your pedestrians would be walking through this area, and then they can pick up here again at the handicap parking spaces and cross at the crosswalk. Uh, most of the rest of the changes were adding islands, reconfiguring a little bit to get the parking lot into, um, more conformity with the existing ordinance. Um, this lot was pretty old and developed under a different set of rules. Um, so we've pretty well been able to address most of those non-conformities and get them, um, to the extent practical. Uh, and here is just a shot of the building facade, how they'll be reworking it. Um, most of it, again, you can very easily pick out the glass and things like that. Um, this number nine represents kind of the existing scored concrete block that's there today as part of the Kmart. They will be, um, repainting that and then reworking this part of the facade. This is where the old Sears, um, outlet was. Um, so they'll be kind of reconfiguring that to match the existing. At the two main entrances, they'll be adding some, uh, wood paneling as well as, uh, some metal decorative paneling in between the two entrances. This is, and this is the far right where the outdoor nursery center used to be. Uh, parkland and open space, not required for non-residential development. In terms of tree cover, there is a ten percent requirement for commercial. They currently have preserved thirty-seven percent because of that huge area in the back, um, plus new landscaping that they're providing, so it's probably upwards of forty percent in terms of tree cover. Uh, the street and perimeter buffers, uh, we're finishing paying attention or at least preserving that seven-and-a-half foot per the overlay, uh, which pretty much just has the street trees along four oh one. They didn't have a whole lot of frontage because their driveways, uh, take up most of it. And the perimeter buffers are unchanged. Um, they're just being maintained, and then they will be supplemented as needed. So if there's any vegetation that's died, um, that will need to be replaced as part of this project as well. Uh, lighting was actually, uh, we went ahead and, um, approved that separately under a site plan modification to the old site. Uh, that kind of started, uh, previously. Um, all the fixtures do have the zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light, so it did get a, a site upgrade in terms of lighting already. Uh, the parking requirements, we looked at all the different possible uses, uh, that they could have, given their list of uses that they will be, uh, pursuing. Most of those fall in a three hundred and forty-four to six hundred and thirty-one parking space range, and they have proposed six hundred and thirty-three. Uh, inspections department and fire department have both reviewed and approved the plan preliminarily. Uh, the site plan does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. However, um, there are some buffer areas, whoops, wrong way, um, identified here in the back. Um, that is kind of the preserve area anyhow. Um, so currently no development in those areas, but if they were to be impacted, um, engineer fire proof of the appropriate state and federal agencies involved. Uh, in looking at the stormwater, um, engineering put together just this little brief synopsis, um, overall, though the project proposes to actually reduce the impervious surface area on the site by point three acres. Um, so therefore, there are no changes to the conveyance system or the actual, um, ponds and treatment devices. Water and sewer, um, has been connected to City of Raleigh and will continue to be connected to City of Raleigh systems. Uh, for roads and sidewalks, um, again, uh, the access will be by the two points, um, off of four oh one. Uh, there is another two cross-access points, one with an adjacent parcel, uh, to the north, and then one that goes across one of the out parcels actually in front. Um, there are no frontage improvements required, um, because again, it's very limited, uh, to just the en- the width of the entrance ways only, and then we talk pedestrian path already. So following technical review and plan revision, staff finds that this project is now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Uh, we have four of them tonight. Prior to issuance of building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees need to be paid. Um, also, any final minor adjustments to utility plans discussed within the technical review committee need to be approved by City of Raleigh. There's just one, one small outstanding thing that they needed to be addressed. Uh, coordination with NCDOT plans for TIP U fifty-three oh two is required to make sure the sidewalk connection will tie in appropriately. Um, that has, um, in, on paper plans been addressed, but we wanted to keep that in as just a reminder. That has, on paper plans, been addressed, but we wanted to keep that in as just a reminder of continued coordination. And then finally, prior to certificate of occupancy, a plat must be recorded at the Wake County Register of Deeds for all utility easement dedications. So our recommended motion for you tonight, we would ask you to refer to the worksheet beginning on page 92 and choosing to either approve or deny SUP SP 2202. And that's all the facts that I have to present to you tonight, and the applicant has their presentation to address the special use permit criteria.
Thank you. Chief Counsel has questions for you, sir?
No questions.
Anything, Mr. Matthews, Mr. River, Singlehund? Okay, down here. Vance?
Questions?
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we'll hear from the applicant at this time. Sure.
Good evening. Toby Coleman, here on behalf of the owner and applicant. I am, my address is 150 Fayetteville Street, Suite 2300, Raleigh, North Carolina. I am a land use attorney with Smith &amp; Anderson. Good to see you all tonight, mayor and council members. I'm here on behalf of the owner for the INC 4300 project. This is really a pretty cool project. As you can see, it is a conversion of the Kmart that was built on this site about 40 years ago, the 80s, has been abandoned for quite a few years. Baker Roofing, as many of you know, looked at making this its headquarters. Ultimately, that did not pan out. And the ownership group made up of DRA advisors and Main Street Capital are working together to convert this, as they've done with a number of other projects around the country, for creative office and life science uses. With me today, because this is a special use permit, we have a number of folks here who can answer any questions that may come up. I'm going to introduce a couple of folks who I know are going to testify. We've got Kevin Dean of Kimley Horn, who is a traffic engineer. I know you all have seen him before, as well as Neil Gustafson of Worthinge and Wachtel, who is a licensed real estate appraiser. They're both going to address a couple of the criteria, and will do so as briefly as need be. Also, we do have others on the project team and ownership team who are here and can answer questions as they may come up. So if you go to the next slide, Jeff, I just want to address really quickly, Jeff did a great job of outlining everything, but I just want to note that this, the reason this is coming in front of you is not because any of these uses are not permitted under the applicable zoning, the SB zoning. The plan, the reason we're having, we have this special use permit in front of you is that, as some of you may know, some of you may not, Garner has a provision that says if you want more than 100,000 square feet of nonresidential space, you have to get a special use permit. And staff has interpreted that to say, if you have one, any one tenant with more than 100,000 square feet, they have to get a special use permit. Well, rather than having the process come up whenever somebody wants a whole lot of space, we thought it would be best to do this on the front end. And so what we're seeking is a special use permit to allow the various uses that we would expect to be here, and that would be light industrial uses, flex space, manufacturing production, and office uses primarily with some storage and warehouse. What that's really for is for life science uses and other sort of what are called creative office space. What does that mean, you may ask? Well, what it, best example I can give you is actually a project that the same ownership group did up in Morrisville. It's called INC at 1101. It was a conversion of a Sam's Club into the same sort of office space. And the tenants are now, I believe that it's called Azure Clean Rooms On Demand, a group that leased about half of the office space for clean rooms on demand for startups and companies that need that sort of thing. And the other half was leased by Schneider Electric as its regional operations for R&amp;D, office, laboratory, and training. This is really sort of the research and development, that part of the economy that I know has become a focus for the town going forward. And it's basically, you need this sort of flexibility in uses so that you can have a mix of office spaces, clean rooms, and other sort of associated things. The manufacturing, just so you know, I didn't understand this until I started working with this group, is that when you do, when you have a life sciences group that wants to, say, build, they have a cell line or something, if they want to actually do some production of that, it counts as manufacturing. So that's why we talk about it, light industrial use, something that won't have any exterior impacts, you know, no smokestacks, no anything like that. If you could go to the next slide. So Jeff went over the site plan well, and he highlighted a couple of things that we were going to highlight. Melissa Brand with Kimley Horn, who's the landscape architect for the project, is here if you have any specific questions. But as you can see, there's really, and as Jeff highlighted, there is no plan to demolish or change the building footprint on the site. Instead, this is really a refurbishment and a re-cladding, especially of the front facade of the Kmart, so that instead of having the old sort of big box facade, the front facade will have glass and metal paneling and wood accents. And then as Jeff noted, you know, this is a project where, because we have to bring up the parking lot to current standards, or closer to current standards than the 1980s standards under which it was originally constructed, some additional land, parking islands, some landscape islands have to be installed, and that will actually reduce the impervious surface. And so with that, I'm going to first hand it over to Neil Gustafson. He's going to address the issue of impact on adjoining property valuation. Again, this is something where it is required by statute that we have an expert, so I want to make sure that we check all those boxes.
My name is Neil Gustafson. I live at 2200 Wheeler Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Was born in Raleigh, graduated from Broughton, graduated from NC State in 1977 in civil engineering, got a master's in business from Duke University in 1985, been a commercial real estate appraiser since 1978. I've testified in dozens of court cases and public hearings, and I've always qualified as an expert witness. They've asked me to comment today about the impact on this property on adjoining or this proposed redevelopment on the adjoining and abutting properties. Personally speaking, I think vacant buildings are the worst things of impact on adjoining or abutting properties. So taking this from a vacant building to an approved, to, you know, occupied building, I think will improve the neighborhood. So it might, it's my conclusion that the proposed redevelopment of the Kmart for, to allow office, manufacturing, spec, flex space, et cetera, as proposed, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. Further, the tenant with lease, a tenant with lease space of over 100,000 square feet also will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. I testified for their facility in Morrisville for the reconversion of the Sam's Club. It's a similar situation with a vacant building. It just didn't add anything to the neighborhood. They've come in, they've improved the neighborhood. I personally think those would be a great benefit to the neighborhood. Any questions?
Okay, counsel, and thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Jefferson? Okay. I believe there are none at this point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Gustafson, I've just handed around a letter on W and W letterhead dated July 26, 2022. All members of council should have this. This is a true and accurate copy of your report.
That's my, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. And then next up, again, to address just traffic impact issues, I'm going to ask Kevin Dean of Kimley Horn, again, he's an expert that is required to testify on these issues under statute, so I would ask him to testify.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Dean, traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I won't go back to elementary school with my schooling like Mr. Gustafson did, but I did go to NC State for civil engineering. I'm a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and I've been doing traffic analysis for 11 years. As Toby noted, we've looked at the project from a traffic perspective, looking at ITE trip generation data. This proposed use is actually less intense than the previously considered Baker Roofing site, significantly less intense from a traffic perspective than the Kmart retail use was. NC DOT has significant plans for improvements along Fayetteville Road, and based on all these considerations, it is my professional opinion that the plan will not cause undue traffic congestion and will not interfere with public safety and transportation services available to existing development. I'd be happy to answer questions.
There is. Let's see if there are questions. Anybody? Counsel? All right, we'll let you off light. Thank you.
I believe we have, I'll just note that at this point, I believe we have met all of the criteria based on staff's presentation as well as our testimony here. We would ask that Mr. Gustafson's report, as well as our presentation, be entered into the record.
And before Mr. Coleman leaves, I don't think we had a chance to ask you any questions, and I assume there are not, not any, any over here. Okay, yeah, and we'll certainly accept the report into the official record. All right. So are there members of the public, this is a public hearing, who wish to offer any comment, testimony at this time? Hearing none. I'm going to close a public hearing and ask counsel for a motion on this matter, special use permit, SUP SP 2202.
Mayor, I find the application SUP SP 2202 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 2204, INQ 4300, with the four site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second. Okay, motion made in second, and just before we vote, does counsel have any other discussion issues you want to bring up? One?
I actually do have one question related to one of the uses, and if there's any limitation on the use, just as a concern for not being sort of the most revenue-producing use, the storage and warehouse, is there any limitation on just changing, applicant changing their mind, and so they want to turn it into an extra space storage building?
Coleman, you want to, well, or Mr. Trezenberg, either one.
There is not a specific condition within this that we have proposed or that is, that staff has recommended. I would note that the reason that we put that in there in large part is because we just wanted to make it clear that within these flex spaces, that that is an allowed use. You know, not that it would be a self-storage facility, but rather that, as you can probably appreciate, if you're a R&amp;D group, you're going to have probably some equipment that you're going to want to store, you know, as part of, you know, 75, 80,000 square feet. And so we want to make sure that that is, it's clear that that is a permitted use with all other uses.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that'd be a permitted use under these other uses as part of just contracting business to have that sort of warehouse space. I guess my, the concern I have is, again, just we're going to change our mind and turn it into a U-Haul storage building and not maximize the revenue potential for the property versus other uses that may be more light industrial.
Okay.
Feedback on that, or thoughts?
Are you asking for some feedback on that?
Yeah.
From your fellow council members, or from Mr. Trezenberg?
So I know under the previous ordinance, self-storage was actually a separate use. I believe we carried that forward into the new ordinance, but I would need to look at a, take some time to look at the actual table.
Okay, any other questions or concerns before we vote? There's a motion properly before us.
I'd offer an amendment that if self-storage is separate, I guess I need to word it properly, that in the new UDO, self-storage isn't separate from storage and ware. If it is separate from storage and warehouse, that we approve it, and if it's not, maybe we, again, just...
So you're offering an amendment? Okay, you just stated it, right?
Yeah.
So we'll have to...
So I just got reminded of, we are actually holding this to the previous version's rules, so I do know that self-storage was a separate use, and so storage warehousing is a big, yeah.
I'd rescind my amendment.
Okay, all right. Anything else in council before we vote? Okay, you have the motion before you. Counsel, if you approve the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? No. And it is so ordered and approved. So thank you, Mr. Coleman, and all the other folks who participated tonight. We appreciate your patience. Good to see some of you, I know, anyway. Okay. All right. That concludes the public hearings we have on our agenda. We'll move right into new and old business at this time with Item 1, Tier 2 Conditional Rezoning, the Bennett Assemblage. Mr. Trezenberg, I believe you're the main presenter on this, is that right?
Correct. All righty, so this one is coming back to you after having been to the planning commission. Again, this is the Bennett Assemblage property on US Highway 401. It is a total of about 62.9 acres, and this is a Tier 2 request, old ordinance, but after 160D. So the Tier 2, Tier 1 system was in place already, but the old rules for how they were proceeding forward. So this was submitted originally back in September of 2021 to conditionally rezone, and we've updated that now to read from rural agricultural to master, to master plan multifamily. That would now be multifamily B for the development of a maximum of 463 units, 87 single-family, 96 town homes now, that number went down by 10, and 280 apartment units that went up by 10. So no net change in units, just in the breakdown. There again is the site location on Fayetteville Road between Ten Ten and Manor Ridge, and directly opposite the property that was just annexed here earlier this evening. There is a proposed condition that was added after the public hearing, is now included as condition number two, and that is that a sanitary sewer manhole will be provided on the JDS Farms property, and that's directly to the west. So on the west side of Pope Branch, prior to the first final subdivision plat recordation, JDS Farms will provide the necessary temporary and permanent easements that would be required for construction and acceptance. If the crossing installation were to be denied by either the Division of Water Resources or the Army Corps, a sanitary sewer manhole will be installed as close to Pope Branch in the property line as possible and along the northern half of the common property line. The design will be completed in order to calculate a fee and lieu payment, and proof of said fee and lieu payment having been paid and accepted, along with the recordation of the easements granted, to incorporate construction requirements for the future installation of a connecting sanitary sewer line prior to first final subdivision plat recordation that needs to be provided to the town. Basically, all that says is that they've worked out an agreement to ensure that the sewer is definitively available to the adjacent property. The existing zoning is now rural agricultural. This is primarily for single-family lots that know more than one unit per acre, but it does include manufactured homes, schools, assembly uses, solar farms, telecom facilities, ag, greenhouses, stables, et cetera, et cetera. The property is in the commercial highway overlay, which was formerly known as the US 7401 overlay, and that one was not changed. So again, the primary condition was that we have a use table here that consists of town homes, single-family cluster, and multifamily, including apartments. This comes from the old MF2 list of permitted uses. And again, if a... old MF2 list of permitted uses. And again, if adopted, this would automatically be converted to the new MFB. Just a reminder of the overall community situation. Fayetteville Road is a major corridor with a significant amount of daily traffic. While there are scattered single-family homes along the highway, most of the uses are moving towards higher intense commercial retail storage. The rezoning site is within three-quarter miles of the commercial activity center at Ten-Ten and 401. Reminder, the neighborhood meeting was held back on March 29th. Two folks attended, out of fourteen that were notified. Moving into the master plan, just some general reminders there on MF2 of how the density worked out. They are limited, though, to six dwelling units per acre by the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, and again, for anything that is platted separately as a fee simple structure. There are a maximum, again, of four hundred and sixty-three units. Here again is the master plan. Some of the things that have been updated since last time, the, kind of the median divided entrance was added to this road profile, as well as the north-south profile. Again, we have a lot of alley-loaded product here for both the townhomes and the single-family. The only front-loaded products are here along the perimeter. We have the apartments, higher densities up near 401. This was the corner that was changed. There were ten townhome units here. It was our suggestion that they remove those ten townhome units, keep them kind of confined to this quadrant. And in your staff report, there's kind of a, a, an exhibit that we included that shows kind of how the depth of this relates to the depth of the service business that exists just a little further south, and potentially how this road could eventually meander and line up with the main drive, Costco. So we believe that this could create either some small opportunities in the future if the residential here is enough to support or to create and combine with future for out parcel development. And this project would have three points of access on US 401, with stubs to the north, south, and west. All three of the access points, again, as a reminder, will be right out only onto southbound US 401, so everyone will have to do the U-turn further to the south. Again, I already described the collector streets. Sidewalks, again, provided on both sides of all streets that are not alleys, and US 401 will be widened to its southbound full cross-section with dedicated turn lanes directed by NCDOT. All of these items, including all the landscaping and everything else, will again be further reviewed at preliminary plat for compliance with the UDO. This project will, at over two hundred units, will also be back for a special use permit if approved. And so when the planning commission looked at this in terms of consistency of the request, they agreed that the site of the request is designated as mixed-density neighborhood center, and that that center may include a mix of residential densities with incidental commercial uses integrated within a community. It can be adjacent to either the town center or on the periphery of established mixed-use areas, and in the future land use plan, there is one of those mixed-use circles that is on the map in this area that touches, just touches the southern portion of this property. Transportation plan, they also found consistent because it will be widened to the half of the six-lane divided roadway, and so with those improvements, it can be considered consistent. And parks, rec, greenways, and cultural master plan. The site is designated as a parkland search area. However, we did feel that the extensive frontage on US 401 was likely better valued as taxable acreage, while the western portions are impacted by the topography of Pope Branch. There are no greenway corridors for, identified for public corridors in the immediate vicinity, so therefore, with payments of fee and lieu going into that pot of money, this plan can be considered consistent with the parks' master plan. And so on a six-zero vote in favor of recommendation, their statement is that this request to rezone sixty-two point nine acres from rural agricultural to multifamily, actually, that should be two, C249 conditional, which would then be transferred to multifamily B, for the development of residential dwelling units, apartments, and townhomes at a maximum of four hundred and sixty-three units, is consistent with future land use maps designation of mixed-density neighborhood center, which states that individual projects may include mixes of those residential densities, with the commercial uses integrated within a community, and that the commercial areas can be adjacent to the town center, or on the periphery of established mixed-use areas, which in the colors crossroads area is identified as. A reminder here that council's obligation to adopt a statement of reasonableness, and staff recommendation is that we support the request as reflected in Section 2, and recommend town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency as stated in Section 6, and further recommend approval of the zoning amendment, CZ MP 2110, as a reasonable request, and for the motion, we ask you to see the worksheet.
Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Was there anyone else who had planned to present on this? Okay. So since we had the public hearing, there's no hearing from the public on this issue tonight. So counsel, you have the information before you, a very thorough information. What say you regarding a motion?
I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with the adopted land use plan detailed in section, is that six? Six of the staff report as I own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20225138, approving rezoning of CZ MP 2110 as requested is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely create better neighborhood appearance by real-loading driveways and using alleyways, promoting walking in the front of the homes, and allowing trash removal to be kept out of sight, furthermore, create cluster home, townhomes, ancillary units, single-family attached and detached homes with singular, similar design characteristics where they can live compatibly.
Mr. Vance, is there a second to the motion?
Sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further quick discussion before we vote?
Question, I don't know how quick it's going to be.
Okay, I'll recognize you, Mr. Dellinger.
Thank you. It's our future land use plan. Explicitly designates this as mixed land, a mixed land use category, mixed-density neighborhood center. There are residential categories, I'll hand these out so you can see, and, and there are residential categories listed on our land use plan, low, medium, high, multifamily, and then there's a category separate for mixed land use categories. It's different and separate because it shouldn't just be rezoned to residential. It stated, it isn't, the interpretation of the may in the mixed-density neighborhood center section is to that it may be mixed density, not that it's optional that there be commercial in it. It is the lowest bar to settle on it being on the periphery of, of commercial. I have a question for Mr. Treesenberg. Is a great project?
Sir, I don't think that it's, I don't think anybody on the staff thinks that this is a bad project, as noted the.
Is it great?
Dellinger, I would just, I would just say that I think you're asking a rather subjective question, and I'm not sure the staff member.
It is a subjective question, and that's where we're here to decide, and, and planning can operate on some quantitative and some specificity, but there's clearly a desire in how the presentation of this was in our packet that we approve this. So question then is sort of, what type of revenue is this going to generate for the town?
I mean, again, it's, I just go back to the fact that apartments are one of the higher generating use tax revenue for, on a per-acre basis. That's one way to look at it. We have made, again, that it's not a big reservation, but again, the mixed-use circle, when we looked at it at the land use plan, just skirts the southern portion of this area, which is set to be about, you know, a quarter mile to a half a mile from the existing center. And in, in talking with staff and with the planning commission, I'm afraid we just have a difference of interpretation on that plan. I was there when we, we wrote it and we drafted it, and I know that that was the purpose in trying to encourage it, but it was not a, it was not a shell, because if you took it to that level, then every little parcel, no matter how this was carved up, would have to have that kind of mix, and you may have some parcels that just don't have enough area in which to do that. So we look at the larger overall area, and yes, we do try to then encourage commercial adjacent. Does it need to be on this parcel? Again, the southern part probably is where it could call for it, and I think it makes a lot of sense to combine it in the future with land to the south, because there is service business just a little bit further to the south. So yeah, can, you know, could it be within this? It probably could, but, you know, the residential densities at this time, and the number of people that would live here, are not going to support it. So, and I, and I'll point to, I'll point to cases like in Chapel Hill. You know, there's, there's neo-traditional tried to do that on the front end, and it was very difficult. Those businesses had to be subsidized for years before there was enough residential development around it to actually support it. And that's if we're talking about, you know, walking and trying to have a mixed walkable kind of neighborhood. So there is a, there is a play and a balance there that you have to kind of achieve. So this, you know, is an area where you also have 401 cutting directly across the front, so you do have the opportunity to attract some of the cross-traffic as well, but do we want that strung all up and down 401? I don't think the plan really envisions that. There's kind of an ebb and flow as you go. You have higher densities at Ten-Ten Road, it kind of comes down, it'll come back up as you get closer to the centers. So that's my understanding and my staff's understanding of how the plan was developed. And again, you know, that's, we can't, I don't feel that we can say that this doesn't meet the plan, so that's why our recommendation, you know, is what it is, but it may not be reasonable, and that's for, for y'all to consider.
It is one thing for individual parcels of one or two acres. It's a stretch to say you have to have all of these. This is sixty-nine acres. That's the same size as Fulton and Cary. It's the same size as the north side of Midtown and Raleigh. They generate significantly, or will generate significantly more revenue than this project. The cost of service delivery for this type of project exceeds the revenue that it generates. Can't build yourself out of the deficit, or digging a hole for yourself by approving more residential, which we've done, which is why we had a four cent tax increase. We'll have a three or three and a half cent next year because we're approving too much residential-only development. That's just a fact, and that burden falls on to single-family homeowners worse than anybody. And we talk about, and we agree up here, wait for great, wait for great. This is not great, and if anybody up here thinks it's great, the town's in trouble. And you can speak, and you could have your opinion, but the approval of these types of developments is not going to do anything for the fiscal stability of the town. When you drive around this county, they're building better. We say we don't want to be Cary, we're building Cary, and Cary's built in the future, and we're not. You go to Chapel Hill, they have seven-story buildings and taller on Hill, on Franklin Street, ain't going on the fifteen-five oh one. We just want to build single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments, and say it can't support commercial with a Costco national chain. They clearly think you can support commercial down there. Why can't this developer do that? I've talked with multiple municipal officials in this county, and they get fed the same line, oh, that won't support commercial. Of course it won't. You're a home builder. You have no interest in developing commercial. It, this will, I've been on this council for three years. I will stop. This is one of the, of any project I've seen. Six-lane highway, five-forty coming in about a mile down the road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. I want to give other council members, this is a discussion time before we vote, so are there other council members who wants to weigh in on this issue? Mr. Dellinger's had his opportunity. Anything from over here? Ms. Barringer? Okay.
I agree with Mr. Dellinger. Since we've had, we had our budget talk this year with our tax increase, and we look how residential properties, I'm not talking about multifamily, which Mr. Treesenberg is correct, it is per square foot as high as Class A office space, but our single-family homes are evaluated so much, so, so less than other parts of the county. It puts the tax burden on everyone, all property owners, but in particular to some single-family homeowners, that type of property. So I agree, I've stated before, I'll say it again, it's a mile from four-five forty is. We, we need to limit, because we just approved, we just, we just annexed across the road the huge project thirteen-hundred units. Well, that's good enough right now, but what else is it meant by colors? We need to look at commercial projects on the main roads. A six-lane highway needs to have commercial projects on it, whether it's 401, or 70, or 50, or Timber Drive, or wherever. We need to look at the value of, if we're going to rezone from R40 or rural zoning, we should look at considering this property with fronts on 401 as a commercial, and then what's behind it where it says low density residential. Okay, maybe that's where residential is the buffer between the existing residential that's back there and a more commercial-type use to maximize the value of the property. We've, we've got to make changes, or we're going, as Mr. Dellinger said, we're having taxes, tax increases every year, because our homes are valued at, you know, we had the example given at our, our retreat earlier this year, where the same footprint, the same home, by the same developer, the same color of the house, the same size of lot, sold for four-ten in Garner and seven-hundred in Apex. You have that, you have that difference here in Garner. We even had to have a four-cent tax increase this year. Anyway, I, I, I concur with what he is saying. I don't agree with everything Mr. Dellinger said, has said on this, but his point is, is that we have to look at large parcels of property, and we have got to start maximizing the value. It's only a mile from five-forty. You go up out in five-forty and in Raleigh and go up another mile of something that's newly new-developed, not something that was existing when that five-forty was built.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Ms. Matthews? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we still have a motion properly before us. Counsel has discussed the issue. I'm going to call for a vote at this time. By Mr. Vance, I believe, in seconded. So if you favor the, the motion that is before you this time, I will ask you to vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Opposed to the motion at this time, I'll ask you to vote no.
No.
Okay. The chair declares that the motion passes on a vote of three favor and two opposed. And so, the motion passes. Yeah, we're not required for any supermajority on this issue, I don't think, are we? All right. Yeah, it is about a little past nine o'clock. We customarily try to take a break, and with this, maybe it's time for everybody to take a deep breath and take a break. I know there are several of you with, still with presentations, and we'll try to get to those quickly. But I'm going to declare about a 10-minute recess until at least 9:15. We'll come back and finish our agenda at that time. So, we are reset for 10 minutes.
Members of the council, tonight we're going to present conditional zoning amendment CZ-22-05. The applicant is Keith Roberts from the Timmins Group, and the tract size is 7.66 acres. This is a Tier One conditional rezoning request from Residential R2 to Neighborhood Mixed Use C266. Here we have an aerial view of the site. Located on Benson Road. Street view. Majority of the properties around the site are zoned residential. We do have one service business is on a district a little ways down the road. There's been some rezoning cases, as you can see, in the area. R2 district allows single-family residential lots at a maximum rate of two dwelling units per acre. The proposed conditions, NC-266. What has changed since the last presentation is that the applicant has elected to remove restaurants from their list of permitted uses. So, this is a little bit of an update from the last presentation. And they primarily want to have concession stands when they have special events on site. They want to have concessions rather than a full-blown restaurant. Overview of the request. It is rezoned, to rezone Residential R2 to Neighborhood Mixed Use. The zoning conditions limit the range of permissible uses to 15 out of a possible 32. And the site was the home of New Hope Church Incorporated, which is now vacant. Site is near the intersection of NC-50, Woodbrook Way, and Indian Creek Trail. NC-50 is a two- and three-lane thoroughfare connecting the Garner Town Core on its north end, south through rural lands to 1010 Road. Again, when considering the rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zone proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. This includes the 2018 Garner Ford Comp Plan. Consistency of the request. This request is found to be consistent with 2018 Garner Ford Plan. The site of the request is designated as civic and institutional. This category includes government office and schools, first responder structures, civic clubs, post offices, and faith-based organizations and uses. The proposed music, dance, art instruction is a use recommended by the CVI designation. On a vote of six to zero, the planning commission finds this request to rezone approximately 7.66 acres from Residential 2 to Neighborhood Commercial NC-266. Conditional. Find that the proposal is consistent with the Garner Ford Plan, land use maps designation of CVI. Asked-proposed uses are those that are directly listed as recommended uses of the plan or closely related. In addition to approving the statement regarding plan consistency, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness for making their decision. Sources that you may use are 2018 Garner Ford Comp Plan, which provides guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, work-in places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources of information as well. Staff support CZ-2205 as presented and reflected in Section 3 of this report. Recommends town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency outlined in Section 5 of this report, and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment request as reasonable one. And here we have the amendment worksheet. Are there any questions for me at this time? And the applicant is here to speak on behalf of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Let me see if there are questions for you, sir. This end to my right, any council members have questions for Mr. Bowie? All right, thanks for the presentation, and let's see, is it Mr. Roberts here? Excuse me. All right. Okay, unless there are questions, there's no further presentation. Is that what you're telling me? Okay. Any other questions that council desires to ask of the applicant here? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Did I recognize anybody else who was here for this matter? It's not a public hearing. Okay. The motion is in order?
I move the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as their own, and I further move the town council adopt ordinance number 2022-5139 approving rezoning CZ-2205. This request is reasonable and in public interest because it will likely reflect a significant change in conditions or support a public policy established by the town since the adoption of applicable land use plans.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews. As I've done on other occasions, if there's any discussion on the motion before we vote, I'll entertain that this time. Any questions? Ready to vote? The motion is before you, so if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. And the motion passes unanimously, and it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We get out the manner here. We appreciate that. All right, there's one other item under new and old business, I believe, and Mr. Treesenberg, are you available for that? MP-2205, White Oak Storage.
Yes, last one for you tonight is White Oak Storage, CZ-MP-2205. The general case information, we have the applicant is Ball Rentals. The owner is Ms. Nancy Kegel. And again, this is at the northeast corner of White Oak and Bryan Road. The tract size overall is 2.76 acres. And again, this is a Tier Two request submitted back in March to conditionally, oh, we got this one. Got over wrong. But this is a Tier Two written request with conditions for a 94,500-square-foot building for self-storage. The use restrictions are included along with architectural and amenity conditions as well. This was zoned R40 and OI. That has translated now to RA and NMX, and the proposal is for light industrial. So, here again, as a reminder, is the site tucked into Adeline Apartments. So here again, as a reminder, is the site tucked into Adeline Apartments. Roughly split half and half currently between the rural agricultural and the neighborhood mixed use, about 1.38 acres each. Since this was at the public hearing, it has been just strictly limited to self-service storage only. Staff noted that the rest of the uses had a much different parking demand as well as travel impact. So recommended that since we were pursuing a use that was actually going to have a net benefit to traffic, that we, the use list should reflect that. Again, conditions are proposed as listed in the staff report. There is a project on Integrity Drive for which it is modeled on. We have kind of been continuing to refine them, just some minor things that may have been changed back forth and improved upon. And then we did come to an agreement to limit the use table to self-storage only. This area of the community is growing. You have White Oak Shopping Center nearby. Traffic frontage, the project will have about 300 feet of frontage on White Oak Road. It is minimal, and so there won't be any impacts to the existing traffic patterns. They will be also doing their frontage improvements here across the front of the tract. I keep hitting the wrong button. Again, you see the widening, the entrance, there is a cross-access potentially if we can ever work out to where access off of a four-way intersection. There will be controlled access to the rear. A varied facade along the front of this three-story building. This is kind of the placeholder for where the stormwater treatment will occur. It may or may not need to be that large, in which case this will just become more lawn And as of right now, the project will have one point of access on White Oak Road. The frontage improvements will be required at time of full site plan review. This is a possible candidate, as we've discussed with some of the other projects in the area for cooperation with other White Oak Road improvements, but it can stand on its own and do just its widening in and of itself. So the site of the request is designated as Corridor Commercial. The Corridor Commercial, located along highways and major arterials, emphasize commercial centers that have individual driveways, separated parking lots, unique signage and differentiated building materials. These centers are less likely to have foot traffic. Permitted uses may include operations with outdoor storage and even outdoor sales. The proposed use of a storage facility can be considered consistent with the Corridor Commercial land use designation. So here is an area where we, where we are talking about traffic kind of non-foot commercial uses along an entire corridor. The transportation plan calls for White Oak Road to be a four-lane roadway. This project requires that widening along its frontage. So with those improvements, this project may be considered consistent with the transportation plan. And the site is not designated as a parkland search area. There are no greenway corridors in the vicinity, so therefore this project may be considered The commission voted seven to zero in favor with the statement that this request to rezone 2.76 acres from RA and NMX to master planned light industrial for the construction of an approximately 94,500 square foot enclosed self-storage facility is consistent with future land use maps designation of Corridor Commercial, which states that individual projects may include operations even with outdoor storage and outdoor sales. For these uses, special emphasis should be placed on landscaping and screening, which has been addressed along the front. Uses along these corridors should be attractively landscaped and screened as these corridors are gateways into the community for the traveling public. Reminder of the reasonableness that you are asked to address tonight and the staff recommendation that we support the revised request is now presented as being consistent, recommends town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment. CZ-MP-2205 request as a potentially reasonable one and see the motion worksheet for some of the things that we have identified as possibilities. So I have, the applicant is here. If you have any additional questions since the public hearing?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Any questions for Jeff before he steps down? None? Okay, and the applicant, does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ball. Any questions that council would desire to ask of Mr. Ball? Clearly, there are none at this time, Mr. Ball. Thank you for being here. Okay. Any, any other comments? Well, it's not a public hearing, so. From all the, a motion is now in order for this particular issue.
Mr. Mayor, regarding CZ-MP-22-05, White Oak Storage, I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested with adopted land use plans detailed in Section Six of the staff report as our own. I further move that the town council adopt ordinance 2022-5140 approving rezoning CZ-MP-22-5 as the request is reasonable and in public interest because it will likely, if I can Encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second, counsel?
Second.
Okay, motions. Any further comments or discussion before we vote? By anybody down this way? Okay. So if you favor the motion before you at this time, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, would you vote no? And the, and it is so ordered. So, thank you, thank you for, for that as well. Mr. Manager, I believe, and Mrs. All the basic items on our regular agenda. I will now call on any persons representing a committee who might have a committee report at this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a report on the HR Committee, the Human Resources Committee. We have two appointments that we would like to seek approval of on the Board of Adjustments. The names of the individuals are Mr. Richard Squires and Mr. Robert Buer to serve terms with an expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Make that the form of a motion that these be approved to serve, I'm sure, I think you did anyway, right?
Moved.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your work. So, counsel, you've heard this recommendation from our HR Committee that these two individuals be.
Mr. Squires, he served on our Parks and Rec Committee, I think, a few years ago. Yeah.
Maybe so, yeah. Trying to think of, yeah, okay. So if you, if you approve the motion that these, a person be selected to serve, would you, I think I had a second, did you second it, did you? Okay, thank you. Yeah, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And there's no opposition, I don't believe. Thank you. I, I would just, let's see, are there any other committee reports? Some of you know that the town accepted the base responsibility for selecting the Stevens Service Award, and so that committee has met and expects to meet again this Friday, I believe, for, for its final action to select a, a, so you'll be hearing word on that when we can conclude that. Reports, I'm aware of. So, Mr. Manager, I'll recognize you at this time for manager reports.
Hey, Mayor, town council, just two events just want to make you aware of. Tomorrow night, National Night Out for the Police, and that will be from five to eight at Cabela's. And then also the Town Players, our community theater group that does a lot of performances at the Garner, the GPAC, Garner Performing Arts Center. They have a youth theater camp and out of that typically produce a show, and they will be doing Moana, August the 11th through the 13th, and there'll be multiple shows of that. I think on that Saturday, I think Saturday there'll be a matinee as well as an evening show.
As for my edification, at the night out, this sounds like a silly question, the food or food vendors at that, do you know? Or maybe not?
I'm not sure if they, if police will have that or not. Yeah, I haven't seen. I know they typically have hot dogs, but I'm not sure what the, I think.
They advertise hot dog chips.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. Just wondering if I could. Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for the town manager at this time about his report? Okay, hearing none, I'll recognize our attorney for any reports.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say one thing, I could have done on my piece, but thank you to the town manager and, and the support staff for taking care of what I believe was a dangerous telegram poll. I see that it's gone now. Appreciate that, that response and taking care of that. Because I understand, working with utility companies, it can be difficult at times to get action immediately on things, but.
Yeah, they have their, have their own schedule, their own priorities, so, yep, we try to work with them best we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, I just wanted to let counsel know that I will be attending the municipal attorneys' conference this Thursday through Sunday in Asheville. And as you may recall, I represent communities between 15,000 and 49,000 on the Board of Directors of that association. And then I also wanted to express appreciation to counsel for support of the internship program. Our intern for the summer, Emmanuel Mahongos, completed his 300 hours on Friday, so he will be returning back to his final year at Campbell University. I have been discussing with a student who graduated from Garner Magnet High School and is currently at Central University School of Law, who's interested in doing a fall internship, approximately 10 to 12 hours a week throughout the, the fall semester.
Is that it?
Yes.
And let me just say on a personal and a professional note, I appreciate your arranging your schedule to have the intern we had here, and so maybe that's something that we'll continue. We'll see how that works out. We already have, as you said, another person. And you in particular, so thank you for your time on that. Okay, I'm at council reports now, so I'll start down to my right down here with Mr. Vance.
Nothing further?
Okay.
Nothing more than what I said.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Quick things. One is fish tables. Fish tables, you heard me. Has anybody seen these fish table signs?
I looked it up over the weekend. I didn't know what it was, sort of across from.
I think it has to do with some gambling casino thing. Can we, I think it's not on the, I think it's on the Raleigh side, and I know it's DOT, but they'll put out 30 of these little signs in the medians and on the side. It is, it's, it's tacky. So if we could have somebody reach out to either DOT or Raleigh to make sure they don't put 30 signs. I mean, they're like political signs, but they're just like a sea of them every weekend. Mr. Matthews, I don't know what I'm talking, this looks awful.
It used to be, right in front of the hotel, we used to be the waffle shop.
It's been a grill, one of those, the blue box.
Oak City Grill, whatever it's called now, yeah. I think it's on the Raleigh side.
I think it is. It's right there with the Days Inn.
Sweet Steaks type.
The weird mechanical intersection with 70, yes. Beside the.
Yeah, I didn't hear your location.
Mechanical and 70, sorry for doing this specific. And just another question on the warehouse space over on John Sausage Road, the new, across from Amazon, do we have any idea when there'll be tenants there? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I knew they had some trouble.
Building, building one is complete and they have some potential tenants. We also are submitting that building for several economic development projects, but they have not signed a tenant for building one, which is the large building. The small building that's, the second building right now is fully leased, and then the third building, they're going to start construction with, I think that delivery date on that is, is 12 to 15 months out, I think, but they're going to try to start that third building soon. But the middle building is leased. They've not given us names or told us to announce names for that, but the smaller building is leased and the, the large one is available for lease with several prospects.
I'm in tandem with that. I think it'd be helpful either during our next council meeting or work session to get kind of, and it maybe could be a closer, an update on where our economic development projects are since Mr. Stallings' departure, just to kind of get our bearings on where those things are. The other is, it might be helpful during our next work session for council to have a review and overview of our human resources policies and our employee evaluation process and retention policies and practices, just to get us back on, and we have, I don't think we've done that for a couple of years since we revised the manual, but then we've had a lot of turnover, and that can be natural, but when you're losing and having to hire a lot at the same time, I think it'd be helpful if council was aware of where we stand with regards to retention and evaluating employees, what that practice is.
Okay, thanks, sir. Ms. Behringer. Okay, I'll go this way, Mr. Singleton.
It's on that second building, there is a name of, on the company's on the front of the building. Now, I've read it and I cannot recall it to you, I've read it twice, gone by it's in red. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not stand out, but it is, there's red lettering up there. And it's like the logo of the company. I cannot recall, so I will not say what it is. I just want to thank Public Works again for their work. I think I said it last week when Mr. Jones was here, cleaning up in the unprepared, the storm damage. I know that's out of whack, throws their schedule out of whack, but I do appreciate their working effort in very hot conditions. Again, the grass might have slowed down being cut, but they did not have, lack of anything to do because that kept them very busy. Be interesting to get reports on that, how much they actually picked up. So, thank you, that's all.
Just did those on the trash pickup. Like you said, I've had a lot of favorable comments and you go, I go down side street, all of a sudden there's a truck and a scoop behind it, they were still picking things up, so, an excellent job. So Public Works is, they're on top of it, and people certainly recognized it.
I'll just mention, actually, a couple of things. An email was circulated, I guess, when, it's been several weeks ago, about EVs, electric vehicles, and, and some comments were submitted around. My, my general idea when I first discussed this with the town manager was to maybe pull together a committee. I, I don't know if sustainability is the right term, but that's kind of what I have in mind, so, I mean, I wasn't just focused on. So I think we need to look at certainly infrastructure as we build some of these new parks and stuff, but the general idea, and, and we can, we can talk about it more a little bit later, was to, you may, maybe have a committee of four or five people, certainly at least one council member on. Department head or two. And, and I guess my idea would be this would, committee would sort of have the charge of, of keeping before us all the latest information going on in the area of sustainability, certainly electric vehicles is one of the. Some work on some of our parks, some of the latest information. So if you have any thoughts on that, feel free to, to send them to me or email me, but maybe a committee would meet quarterly or whatever and, and keep the council informed of, of new ideas and information in that regard. That's generally what I had in mind.
I think that's pretty much it.
All right, and I had a good show at the GPAC this past week with the, I guess, see groups there that were inductees into.
Yeah, the Music, Music Hall of Fame.
Yep.
North Carolina Music Hall of Fame.
So, you know.
Rhythm of Soul, I think it was called.
I think that's right. That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Catalinas and Chairman of the Board, and I miss the names of some.
The Drifters.
Yeah, Drifters, yeah, so.
That was on radio down east. I heard a couple of stations talk about that, and they said the Garner GPAC, I was like, I will tell you the station, let me come to you, and I was like, wow, it's one of the music stations down there, Deech, Biggie and Blues, that was it. Broadcasting several stations online, but yes, they had, they mentioned on there that it was from anything at Garner.
Very entertaining event, and of course, if it was playing music, I can remember. Not a few years, a lot of years. Okay, Mr. Behringer. All right. I believe that's everything. Closed session, I don't believe we have any closed sessions scheduled tonight, is that right? Okay. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff out there? All right, motion to adjourn is in order. Motion to adjourn seconded, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you vote no, you can stick around a while, but I want to declare this meeting adjourned of the town, during town council. Thank you all for your time this evening and your lively discussion.